Explain before, before we get into the motion and the discussion phase. So that the three board members themselves in public, the better in what it is we're attempting to do. So if I could ask us to just explain bullet points through what we are, what we're doing with all the participating board meetings. I don't know if everybody else there has seen what we're trying to, what we're doing, what is being attempted to be done. We're not looking to try and define. So I'm going to ask you, will you?
You might ask to lay out where we started and where we're at potentially going. The board had a policy, which allowed for public comment at board meetings based upon public comment. And before that time, there was some two policies to be revisited with conversation through the public and that policy committee, a policy was put out to allow public comment and conversation with attorneys and school board associations were allowed for public comment at the beginning of the meeting and public comment on a general end of the beginning of public comment and the other end of the at the end of the meeting.
That's your, that's our current policy.
That is our current policy. And it didn't differ all that much from the original policy. And I'll go back to my first step of meeting. The practice was actually much different than that. Well, the practice was very much more conversational where we weren't looking at a policy and it was if I had a question, where we have a question, you would get an answer. And Jim had a question, you have a question, you would answer. And there were some things I think that is very comfy about that, but also I think it's important to recognize that the board is having its meeting in public to conduct its business in the public. And it must be.
Means it's also law aid.
It's not a meeting for the public, meaning it's a meeting of the board held in public. The board has the right.
It's not a public meeting.
Right. The board has, has the right to not have public forum, public comment whatsoever. It has the right to do that. This board has not taken that avenue and just the opposite brings forward now. In our total meeting, attorney Goshancey came and said, you folks are in an interesting situation. And Mr. Porter had bought himself a time to get any free speech. And the attorney said, you are, you are dancing on a, where you have to honor first amendment of free speech and you have to protect the rights of your employees and your staffs. And that's a very difficult thing to do. And we sent him off saying, can you practice a policy to make that happen? And he said he would give or go. He would try to work with the ACLU. He also mentioned working with folks in Pembroke because Pembroke have just gone through a situation with their school board and the ACLU had stepped in, they have to do some extensive work in training with this school board to write a policy. So Jim went on to do some of that work. He came back with a version of a policy that you took the first reading on. And again, I think, I just want to, I want to be very clear. The board is trying to do its due diligence to allow public comment because the board has always said, we want to continue to hear from our public. Our attorney said very clearly, the only way to go down this road safely is not to have it. You directed him, no, that's not what we're looking to do. We like to try to find the balance. So the board has spent time, has spent money to try to find the balance, secure the community at the same time, understand they have protection, they have to protect student employees' rights on the other side. And Mr. Schiswell is absolutely right, there was case law in other states that have, have gone the other way and said, boards can and cannot do work specifically for the state of the nation right now. That has not been brought towards, to that level. And so we are trying to come up with a policy that allows for public comment, but still protecting the board on both ends of free speech and employee rights. First of all, policy was put through. In the process of that policy being put through, the person was afraid, I had met more correspondence afterward from, from our attorney who, who was asked by, I don't know his name, right? Gillis, I don't know his name, right?
Bessonat.
Thank you. Gillis Bessonat was contacted Jim and said, hey Jim, I heard you looking at a policy. Can we take a look at it? And Jim said absolutely, my sense is they were trying to have contact before this request and there was some contact with Gillis and I, no. And regardless, the policy was shared and they had some lawyer ACLU conversation back then. Based upon that there were, I remember at the seven talking points, again, back and forth, and came to a resolution of a new policy, I should say amended policy, with very few changes in that policy that I'm hearing tonight. Gillis has said that at this point in time, the ACL has no plans to take action on our end regarding this policy. And our attorney said, you know, we're going through this process, we're doing this and trying to do the right thing. And if there is an issue, please let us know so that we're not doing this for nothing. We're trying to get it to work. And by the email exchange, the conversations that I've had with our attorney, and again, the information I received from Gillis is that the ACLU will never give us the thumbs up and the ACL does write our policy. We're not going to understand that from the ACLU. But at this point in time, based upon the policy that I'm going to present to you tonight, they feel that we're, we're okay to continue to move forward. Doesn't mean it won't be challenged at some point in time, but as it stands right now, at this moment, where they are at, where we are at, we should continue to move forward with this policy.
Could you, and I'll help in place, also, just the mechanics.
Yeah.
The mechanics of what it is, you're hearing in first person, the mechanics of what it is this policy will attempt to do.
So, did anything else? Are you aware of a process which would not help the swing and be a long way? No. No, it's not one of the things. What do you mean this is? The new, the new version. Because you have first reading, to me, for the very small minutes, you rather like to amend your first reading, that's why that's on. So you can make this your second reading would be best.
Or we could look at the evidence since they were made on this, to have a first reading to be the example.
Donut?
Donut. I like that I always talk about the mechanics of what it is that our board, board is attempting to do and the reasons why, or at least the best of reasons.
So one of the things that makes me great fear is the idea of a public forum. And to be able to create a public forum without infringing upon free speech, what the lawyer talked about was the idea of trying to make it a limited forum. Now, again, I am not a lawyer, I'm not going to try to get too deep into the weeds on this. But by putting some parameters around what is expected in your public forum, it may help us determine, it may help the argument as far as free speech, what is and what is not allowed. And again, I'm not saying any foolproof, this is will be iron. So talks about every other meeting, the first part of the policy is the same as one that was in the package. Talks about every other meeting, across the hour set, and really the change comes, and as in the first policy, speaks to the board, hearing public input that has to do with the board's jurisdiction, things that the board controls. Attorney Shonsey is very clear that the board does not control a lot of things, but the board, the board does control superintendent, the board does control policy, the board does set a budget, the board does, is responsible for, for the career. And so we wrote that into the first paragraph, and really the change there is, it does not prevent, public comment, this will not prevent public commenting on the superintendent because the superintendent is under the guidance of the board. It's the one person that the school board hires. Outside of that, they take the recommendation of the superintendent. And so that leaves the superintendent in, in his actions or her actions hoping for discussion and input. The rest of the bullet points there, it's still three minutes per session, it's still 15 minutes. Again, this is common here, employees other than the superintendent, so again, all of employees really should be on the channels of command and policy, policy K, AL, KDL. We've got through them, we talked about those, they're on our website, if you'd like to reference them. Again, the same language continues regarding, regarding what is expected from public comment. I can't get to that low anymore, definitely the black man, so. The chair's ability to terminate speaking privileges on individuals who do not adhere to policies now. And this is where the lawyer in the ACLU went at it for regarding what's awful, was offensive, was threatening and conceiving things that were stricken out, taken out of the policy that were in the policy before. And then the last comment, and I think there was a comment earlier today about, you know, you can stop public comments together if you don't like sort of the potential viewpoint. And misads that comment, but you will not, they will not be able to do that. So let's say the building project's up to the next board meeting and the board doesn't want to hear any comments on the building project, they can't just say, well, I have a public comment because we don't want to hear people's input because we're not going to get them based on the, the, the building. So they, they can't do that. If there was a, if we were holding a special meeting, the board obviously has the right to say, we're not having a public comment today, we're, we're future going for an open board meeting, we're not having a public comment this year. So I think there's some, some of a new change. Again, I'm going to go back to the fact that you just used the word on the still from your, you tried to find balance, but you really tried to find balance of understanding and wanting to listen and your responsibility to the school board, to the community, and understanding and realizing the responsibility to the employees, the students and the members. And, you know, talking to the, talking to the attorney, I think potentially disproving the monopole of the policy for other districts, I think it tries to really walk that line. Now, there's a comment at the front of the policy regarding every other one. And I know, Jim, you spoke to that earlier.
Well, the purpose of that, I mean, the purpose of that, as I understand it, is to be, and I'm not a attorney, I don't have a big one, but to be, if, if we had a policy in which a public comment happened every, at every single meeting, that would become practice. And that would, that would not make it a limited, we have limited it by saying, just as, just as the original policy back, back in days gone by where it was agenda only, and then we changed it to agenda only in the beginning and then whatever at the end, we're just trying to make this a limited such that we can get comments from the public. The date was every other, so that's, that's in my mind, arbitrary decision to whoever, every third, every fourth. But the point is to make it limited such that we can say, please don't speak about personnel, or you can speak about the superintendent, you can speak about each and every board member that's here, but personnel and students, or specifically, I want to say students and then personnel are, are to be, are to use the policies that we have, KDL and KDLH.
So Paul, how is that free speech?
It's not. And here's what you guys don't understand. We are having a meeting in public, this is not a public meeting. We are, I am trying to do my very best to make sure, to make sure that we have public input. We could just say, no public comment whatsoever, and we would be within the rights.
Yes, you would.
Of the board. I don't want that. I was thinking, if you remember, I was.
None of us, none of us want that. So just a level set, some different comments that are made tonight, different things said in different forums. We have spent an inordinate amount of time and money on this particular topic, trying to find the right balance. It's one thing to sit in the audience and speak to us, as is your right. It's different to sit here and balance your right to free speech and comment and valuable input with the rights of the students and the staff. So if other districts have a policy, we can write a letter and it's reviewed and decided whether it's read. That's not what we want to do. Other, other communities don't have public comment. That's not what we want at all. If we're not going to go there.
On the policy committee, I said.
We're going to save hundreds of hours this year and just shut it down. It's finding that balance.
Direct it to me, Ray. Quite enough mention. Can you name some of the districts in the country?
Ah, top of my head.
This is not just about a dialogue in the public right now. I do, I do have those answers, I'll take those answers.
I, I get to comment on this, I'm going to finish my comment.
Yes, please do.
Whether people are happy with where, where we are at this point, we are trying to balance having an opportunity to public this year, their class. Frankly, this is probably out of line for me to say without talking to the board or just surprising people. Your pushback on our communication to you, I would like to be on record on that 11% review. I know it's much higher than that, so I'm just going to throw that out there. But your point, I accept on, on, and Jan as well, I accept. We have a responsibility to interact with you. Your points were well made. That gives us a lot to think about, and we can think about changing some of our behavior on our response rate. I think that's very fair. If we didn't have one to public comment, we wouldn't have heard some very reasonable and fair feedback. We accept that feedback. Whether this has been a smooth process, whether we're there yet, I just want to be clear to anybody listening, our intent is to balance your input and right to do so with our responsibility in care of the students and the staffs. I think this is a huge step forward, having seen the entire exchange with Gillis or Giles, with the ACLU lawyer. I think we've made huge strides with this. Doesn't mean it's perfect, but the entire time, whether it's been messaged that effectively or not, we've put an enormous effort into making sure the public has its voice in a, in a fair and reasonable way. Whether that's perceived that way, that has been our intent the entire time. That has gotten us to this, which I feel personally significantly improved in finding that balance more. So that's, I just want to level set and have my opinion heard in that as well as an individual.
Thank you. I'm the policy committee person that's here tonight, able to sit on the policy, would make, policy is also set with our administrators. I'm the one that pushed very hard to make sure that we had a public comment portion that was not agenda only at the end. And people have pointed out to me, well, it's been working fine. Well, I don't want to fix something that's broken after it breaks. I, I want to make sure that, that we don't, that we're not creating problems. And I think that with this policy, although it's not perfect, it provides, I see people shaking their heads. The alternative is you sit and watch us, and this is not a threat, this is reality. You sit and watch us and go home. Or we allow public comment on agenda and other items that are not personnel. I think frankly, people, we need to speak about people. Here we go. Or, and sitting in the chair that I'm sitting in, being the judge of what is appropriate statements and where is the line crossed? And should I stop them at three minutes or just let them finish their sentence or their paragraph? I don't want to do this. I don't want to be perceived as a bad guy, but we need to have a policy, a justice appointed out perfectly. That balance, it's a give and take. And I know that you guys are negotiating with us, we're trying to figure out what's best for our community. I don't want another lawsuit where we have to go through a process in which we spend money. So a simple solution for that is no public comment. That's been said before, it's been said multiple times. I don't want that. Brian doesn't want that, Ed doesn't want that, Jesse doesn't want that. I can't speak for you guys, but I'm assuming that would be the case. So we value your input. We're in a community that, you know, as I, as I, Jan asked me, and I'm sorry to put your name out, you know, we should have a situation where, you know, each board member says, what have you done the past 30 days about yourself and board members? I watch other school board meetings. And, and I think that we have something special here where you guys can get up with the angles, then we can walk out together and talk about something different. Okay? Nobody's, nobody's really that angry on that here. So we left the first policy under my championship to one, and really, there wasn't any significant issues. Now we're tweaking it a little bit, and if it doesn't work, guess what? We can go back here with a different board and do it again. But I'm tired of doing it and listening to all the varying points. This is a meeting in public, not a public meeting. So having said all that, does anything really matter to the board? Okay. Brian, Ed? This is, I want to now.
Discussion occurs after the motion?
No, no, no. We're going to, we're going to quit the motion, we haven't made the motion. I wanted clarification, I wanted slide presentation, I wanted a little bit of dialogue. We're going YouTube, we can look what we're doing. And now I want to have, I'm looking for a motion. And the other question I have is, are the, are the changes that we installed, or the additions that we installed, that much in which we need to have first reading or just do it for the second? And I'll leave that up to whoever's going to make the motion, but I'll make the motion.
Can you reiterate the difference between, said practice, if you do it every meeting, it becomes the norm and therefore you treat it differently? I'm rephrasing to help. I guess I'm running one, going to every meeting versus every other meeting.
Can I shift that? Because I, I would, I want clarity on that. That's my one word that circled in this, so I just want other, every other meeting. I was, I'm not in the policy committee, I try to keep it clear every day. Clarity on the limited public comment, we have it every time, it's no longer limited for its policy. And that's, that's the, for practice, that's the, that's the distinction.
That's what I'm assuming the distinction coming from counsel was. And go ahead.
So he is trying to frame out what a limited public forum is. By putting specific things in there, three minutes, every other month, those are creating that limited public forum. And that's why that was put in. But also, and there's an honest piece of that, allows you to know when you get to X meeting, this business, and you go over that business. But the, the main stage is to structure and frame out limited public.
What information are you asking?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you know the procedure better than I do. I think your information is incorrect. I'm going to, I'm going to stop right there because you're, you're giving an opinion. Okay.
Tell me please how the relationship is with a monthly meeting, what that has to do with a limited public forum as opposed to.
You know what I'm going to say, it's easy, but I'm just telling you as it was defined in the meeting by the attorney. Like, if this is helping us to frame what a limited public forum is, it's adding parameters to the limiting part of it.
Right.
And the limited public with definition, what is in the.
Because, because it's a free speech issue, right? So by making, instead of a public forum, which is everything's on the table, you're putting parameters to try to set what is and what is not allowed in this, what's called a limited public.
But limiting it to three minutes or 15 minutes every meeting doesn't have enough qualifiers.
And I know, this is a question from the attorney.
Right. So I'm not going to tell you that in my conversation with the attorney, I'm not going to, he's not going to live it down under the other line. Nor do I think it makes or break the pause. But it does continue to frame what it is that you asked him to, in charge of. In his opinion, not my opinion.
Definitely knows I may have been mistaken on this with people sending us emails. When I saw group emails coming in, it was my issue to me, if you had multiple people having conversations on your meetings, that constitutes a meeting.
That is true.
So I posted. So if you have multiple people commenting on those emails, I thought it would be a violation by not posting it or having them. So I may have been mistaken in that and thought most emails were meant for us to take in and listen to. So I apologize.
And I believe we have been practicing the discussion at some point in time regarding if a group email was sent that was asking a specific question, that I would try to answer that question. And I certainly hope that I try to do that, different emails on my way to the full board, whether I get a sense of the board or I have that, or answer it, I try to give that answer. But I don't, I agree that they're.
To, to, to answer that question, because I don't mind.
I'm looking. I don't want to start these, these meetings that's not public knowledge.
Right. But you can respond singularly to the person sending it.
No, if you, you from that, I can just go straight to radio straight.
Or just enter their name in a different, different, different. Or, or from the public, if you guys L P C C us, we don't know. So all five go out, and we don't know that the other, me, I don't know the other four members got messages or were holding. So the email communication, yeah, that does create a situation in which if three of us agree upon something, that could be construed as a, as a meeting. We didn't have a public meeting, we didn't, we didn't necessarily vote on it, but now all of a sudden, we're moving forward with that. So that's what we're trying, sort of.
Just probably apologize for the arse part of that, it was my interpretation of the emails and what you created.
So we're now at the point in our agenda where it's policy. And we're at the second reading, B E D H, B E D H, public participation at board meetings. Board is a vigorous discussion, I'd say, or just sort of not starting some decisions. So in order to move, move based on.
Let's start off. I don't like the other, what kind of proposal they can speak of.
So let's, let's do this. Let's put it on the table, make a motion, put our policy on the table, get it seconded. And then in our discussion phase, we'll talk about amending the current proposed policy.
So move us forward to that. You accepting the motion?
Oh.
So I want to make sure I have the wording exactly.
Unless there's a motion returned, we can do that.
No, not yet, a little while.
Go ahead.
I make a motion to accept, and again, the wording of the second, the second reading.
So the, the newly proposed second reading.
Newly proposed reading. Yes, I propose accepting the newly proposed second reading of the B E D H policy.
Motion made by Jesse, seconded by Ed. Any discussion? One more. Um, I don't, you have a policy, we have state public development policy, public development policy, sorry. It requires an opportunity we offer to concern citizens to enact the policy we proposed. We do, we do not follow the procedure. So what you're asking, what you're suggesting here is that, if I'm reading, if I'm reading here correctly, that we shouldn't have this as the second reading, we should make this the first. I mean, we're in a policy, this is a policy, the first.
Policy also, we can take action on policy. So you don't have to, you can go, you can go first and second meeting together. You can say, so the continuation of policy, right? So, the board has the option to follow it. How to interject policy? It's in the... If you read on the policy, it says the board has the option to follow up. That policy is policy adoption. Meaning, they could say, "We're taking the first reading and the second meeting tonight." So, they have a first reading. They can bring that and say, "This is a second meeting with amended changes," and push that forward. Again, I'm just clarifying the policy, what the board does and how it was about businesses.
The motions made by Jesse, seconded by Ed. We're in discussion phase right now on what's been presented to us. And we hear that there's issues that may change, or suggestions that we want to offer.
I think it's very consistent that we'd like to see that every meeting is opposed to every... Same policy, just open every meeting.
Would you like to amend?
So, can I amend my motion? Since I made it?
You may be defeating the purpose of limited...
So, you can just make the amendment. So, you now have a motion, amendment on motion. So, you would vote on the amendment to the motion.
We don't even have an amendment yet that's offered and seconded. So, once that's offered and seconded, then we'll vote on the motion.
Do you want to offer it, Brian?
Uh, the offer that we change policy B E D H as presented to... We're gonna actually take, beginning with the August board meeting each school year, as well as continuing every other month. And probably just start it with, at the regular scheduled school board meeting.
Could you continue the sentence where it began into...
Yeah. So, I would start the sentence... I'm gonna go back to my English. At the regular scheduled school board meeting, the policy be a fifteen-minute pre-set aside at the beginning and end of each meeting as a public comment period to allow citizens to address the matter. So, basically, I've taken the first part of that sentence in the third paragraph. So, I would strike, and if it's easier, I would strike, beginning with the August board meeting each school year, and continuing every other month at... I'm gonna strike that.
So, the motion is...
To strike that note, which in that third paragraph, in order to ensure that we're able to have public comment at every school board meeting, based on the prior opinion of B E D H.
Can you take a slide? Fifty minutes with a side.
That's fine, Jesse.
Fifty minutes with a side.
Is there a need for policy B E A to be this way?
No, because that's what's going to be under policy.
Policy just start fifteen minutes.
Yep. I do feel that...
So, take the first three lines, two and a half, and with the first fifteen minutes, or fifteen minutes we set aside, at the beginning and end of each meeting. So, we'll just continue on that there.
Is that all motion, Jesse? Moment. Okay, you guys up?
I have to change policy B E D H as presented by striking, and I'm gonna have a line that you guys just wrote. And start at fifteen minutes we set aside.
Okay. So, motion made by Brian. Is there a second, Brian, motion?
Second.
Second by Jesse. Any discussion on Brian's motion? Second by Jesse. Ed? Hearing, no discussion, no call for vote, always a favor, if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried, yes. So, that now puts us to... Public participation at board meetings, B E H D. We need to... We just... we amend it. We're not... just ask the call. Okay.
So, the process of amending the first reading, they can take. I misspoke. The emergency processes, what I was thinking, if a policy has emergency process, they could...
So, just to clarify, I'm here, cue, crossing our eyes here. Did we approve the policy with the amendment?
We approved the policy with the amendment.
Just to make sure?
Yep. I heard you were gonna change the policy, not the new one. He said, "I'm gonna change policy," means things to change accept policy.
So, you...
No, you already made the motion originally.
So, do we need a motion to accept the policy?
No, we need the original motion to be accepted already. So, we just need to... Just need to...
You need to figure out what you have.
Someone to accept the policy.
You already made the first motion originally, not to be accepted.
Right. All for vote.
Call for vote on policy.
Call for vote, call. Thank you. Glad to see you guys are having fun. I'm gonna call for vote on policy B E D H as presented and amended. No further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carried. Moving on. Back to next. District calendar. We probably have a district calendar in front of you, actually.
So, we have a change in the district calendar on the front of me. And this came from later feedback. That came from the teacher association, and a thorough conversation with the district team. And a change of prayer is simple. Change is very simple. The last PD day, there were two PD days in June. One of those has been eliminated and has been put to the January twenty-seventh. We still have five PD days. We had three at the front, we had two at the end, changed two at the end to one in January, but after the lockdown, we came back.
It's an appropriate time to ask for citizen and want clarification on the arsenal day policy and concern with the school year running late. Do you mind just giving a quick statement?
Sure. I guess I didn't hear the question.
The arsenal day policy.
Yep. So, anytime we miss a day of school, we make that day by law. Yeah. Sorry. So, in June, on our respective date, Monday, June fourteenth, we build in sort of five additional days. If we miss seven days, we will make up seven days. So, teachers under contract, under contract, at June thirtieth, as long as you're back until July, we're pretty much ready to go. If there was a situation where a state was in a state of emergency, or potentially something happened to our building or our project rose, and we couldn't conduct school like... petition the commissioner of education, we petition the governor, and we could try to wave at those.
And we have them at that.
We have them.
Right.
Yeah. I think in the... Safeguarded question was, when we have early dismissal, so...
Yes, it does. We either come in late or dismiss early, that kind of thing.
All right. So, calendar motion.
Motion to accept the calendar presented.
Motion made by Brian Garland. Any discussion on calendar? Hearing none? Call for vote in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is to accept the proposed ABC report.
So, again, you all sent the ABC report last night. Here's the final draft of that report. It gives you a brother charge of the folks at Santi. They're exempt to you to accept any recommendations and necessaries to accepting that report. It is available on that table for both of the elements. You're looking for it.
I think all of us have... Motion to accept the advisory budget report of the district for 2019.
So, Jesse seconded by Ed. Any discussion on the letter?
Great discussions. Thank you very much to the participants. It was really... we got pushed with some great questions and had a really good dialogue with long meaningful conversations. So, thank you very much, the community, for...
Call for vote. All in favor? Aye. Any votes? Any extensions? Hearing none? Let's see. Who we have left here for the... Mary Ellen. Kevin Cooney got up and left. And Tanner was here previously. Those were the three public community members on the B...
ABC.
ABC. ABC. So, thank you very much for your volunteerism. We appreciate it. I think that's a lot to vote for. And we will be scheduling on follow-up. Of the meeting. What do we say?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is approve of those 2018-19 budgets. Who would like it?
That question, I have a proposal of twelve million, three hundred nineteen thousand, one hundred sixty dollars budget. For the 2018, 2019, some of these schools are here.
Motion made by Jesse. Consider seconded by Jesse. Seconded by Ed. Discussion? We certainly had a lot producing.
Extensive discussion.
Anything?
Motion.
All good. You can thank the call for vote. All in favor? If I was standing, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carried, yes. Thank you. Next is to approve the proposed 18-19 fall budget. Is there a discussion on that? I'm sorry. Let me change that and amend myself. Approve proposed warrant articles. So, we have a motion on that. We need to... we need to... You're prepared? You want?
Yeah. I have a point. Looks like the same.
Please do.
So, I'm receiving petition warrant article. I do have petition warrant article in front of me. We have checked the three which is on it. It's got access twenty-five. Which is... Which we will put on ballot of the...
Yeah, please do.
Should the contract negotiations between Santi Teacher Association, I U Teachers Union, and the Santi School Board be conducted in public session so that both the teachers and the taxpayers can observe how their interests are being represented? So, that had the appropriate number of signatures. So, we'll put pair column of ballot as the very last warrant. I was telling you that for the... Not on ours, obviously. Hearing it will be along with what we presented at the little reception. And obviously, we'll make the ballot work.
Yes.
So, clarity for everybody, because of the signature count, it is now warrant article. It's now... My petition. So, turn the on there.
Whoever rules the petition shall have the opportunity of delivery session to speak on his behalf at the... So, that would be add to warrant articles. We discussed the warrant articles. Has there been a motion?
Motion to support the warrant articles as presented.
Motion made by Jesse. Seconded by Brian. Any discussion? Hearing none? All vote? All in favor? If I was standing, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carried, yes. Now, to the... What I wanted to say earlier, and that would be to approve the proposed fall budget. Now, we need a motion. Excuse me? All right. So, right now, we're approving the 2018-19 fall budget.
Make a motion to approve the proposed fall budget.
I do, Brian. Brian, your motion? Does anybody second Brian's one?
Second.
Jesse seconded with Brian's motion. Any discussion on this? I do have one question. How much is the difference?
Thank you, Gavin.
Thank you, Gavin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor? If you'd like to say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carried unanimously. And lastly, is the accepting of the impairment educational slash facility study of Santi Elementary School. That will require a motion.
Make a motion to accept the proposed round of educational facilities.
Motion made by Brian, seconded by Ed. Any questions, discussion? Call for vote, all in favor? If you'd like to say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carried unanimously. That includes the action items. Next on to information items. Russ, can you receive the letter, N H P O E?
So, just folks, you approve the professional government aspect of my... Thank you. But last, here's some time. That plan has been accepted by the State Department of Education. Again, I want to thank Megan Shire and Jody, Joanna, Leslie, John Reed, and Danielle. Did I miss anybody? That is everything. For their work, and myself, and their work for putting that thing together. Danielle, I can have a look for that, sir.
Thank you. Next will be the Santi Middle High School scheme of championing February fourteenth to fifteenth. And it was sort of an act of, and it's a field trip. Oh, no, I can...
No action.
Oh, no action.
So, yes, because this was actual policy. This is a field trip. So, that's where you're being...
Terrific.
Let me ask who's... Here, because I know he's got a twenty-three and fifteen.
I know the fault. Try and make speed.
I have a business. I don't... I don't need to right now. There's a lot. There's a lot of schools here. So, we're just kinda...
I think the last one was twenty-three, twenty-three people.
Kind of sounds right.
No.
We're just there after we're just starting. Tomorrow, tomorrow.
Tomorrow's the first big assembly.
It's usually when you're really aware of it. It's amazing to be at the school and their coming in and the basketball parents picking up. There's like forty-five kids in this little school hall. It was awesome.
All right. Well, the point on our agenda was, a motion needs to be made for manifest, whereas April was not here, so we need to second choose and make a...
Make a motion to approve AP manifest 2018-11 and 12, as well as thirteen, and payroll manifest 2018-13 as well.
Motion made by Brian, seconded by Ed. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor? If you'd like to say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Okay. Next on our agenda is public forum, and there are three minutes, fifteen total.
Just a couple of comments. You said that during public... I can't remember which one of you said this, but public comment, you know, concern that it's about, that the public is talking about teachers and students. I haven't seen that. I haven't seen that as a problem. Each of you were elected as individuals with individual minds and individual abilities to have opinions. The New Hampshire School Board Association, when I was on the school board, I went through the training session, and it was more of an indo... It was more of an intimidation session. And Ed, I sympathize with you, because from that, you learned that you were not supposed to respond or respond to emails. That's not correct. You are individuals. I would anticipate... I've sent, oh, thirty emails out and with no even thank you. And I have other things to do, too. But I have a passion for education, and I really want to stress quality education for the kids. I guess I'm disappointed with what I heard. I heard Russ talk about how this policy was developed. But I didn't hear from the individuals, from Ed, from Brian, and of course, Eagle wasn't here. But when I emailed and what I talked to each of you, it seems like you didn't know much... But when I emailed, and what I talked to each of you, it seems like you didn't know much about what this policy was developing into. It was Russ and the lawyers, and that's a concern that I have. We have a board, I, I want to see more interaction, I want to know that you're doing your due diligence, and that you are working and, and learning about all these things. It's not easy. It's a lot of work to be at, at this position. It's not fun. It's not fun being poked at. I've been at the short end of a stick of, um, the school board lawyers, who tried to take away my individual rights. I know you have to do your due diligence, because you can't assume that they know what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Um, any break word? Yes? Uh, just to follow up on what Sean just said, um, I believe the case law that he said is on the New Hampshire School Board Association website, you can probably all read it. So that's readily available. Uh, same thing here, I haven't seen anyone talking about teachers and students. I did see someone inappropriately handing out emails, giving privileged information. I haven't seen it come from anyone that I'm associated with. Any bad behavior I see has come from that side of the table, shoving tables around. And...
That was Jan, I'm sorry. You have two more minutes. Jan, you have, you have a minute remaining, sorry. Go ahead, Brad.
The bad behaviors come from that side of the table, shoving tables, I believe Charlie would shut down the library, I believe Jumper would maybe shut down the library. So I don't, I haven't seen any bad behavior, which I don't understand the reason for the policy change, but you're done, and that's it. Uh, the A C L U legal director, and I've had several conversations, uh, he shared my concern about the clause of canceling public forum at your record. Uh, you could have canceled the public forum tonight.
Can I cancel it right now? This is, this is a, meaning, not publicly, meaning publicly, which we...
Understood.
Yes.
I'll give it to you. You could have canceled public forum tonight, this is good, and you possibly sued by the A C L U for doing it, because it would appear to be, you want this to... A bunch of people come in, you know they don't talk about a topic, and you shut down public forum. You're very conscious of not being sued, is you, because you do.
Have we shut down public forum?
I'm sorry?
Have we shut down public forum?
You've shut it down. And I thank you.
And when you talk about behavior, it's a comment to the meeting, there was, there was, it's taped and recorded in public record.
Jesse, just a minute, for a second, this is a public comment, we're taking away from the...
I was just pushing towards that.
We need to listen to what they have to say, and not respond. Thank you. Okay, I'll respond, we'll put that, the public record is intense.